Welcome, everyone, to tonight's meeting of the Burlington City Council on today, May 16, 2017. I'd like to take a moment to ask everyone to silence all electronic devices. For tonight's invocation, council recognizes Mayor Protem CeeLo Fawcett.
Let's bow our heads, please. Dear heavenly Father, we come before thee asking you for your grace and mercy on this city. You brought us this far and take us to work rest of the way in, protect our first responders, all employees of the city, this council, give us the knowledge to make the decisions that need to be made to keep our city going. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. We have a proclamation this evening. Before that, we'll recognize David Stevens.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. As I said, my name is David Stevens. This is Susan Kornell. We are here actually on behalf of the Children's Museum of Alamance County. We're both members of the board of directors there. And we are here on behalf of what has proven to be and will continue to be for the indefinite future, a very important cause, not only to us as a community, not only to me personally, but also to the Children's Museum, and something that they've adopted as something that they want to move forwards with, and that is children's food allergies. And for those who don't realize, it is now certainly much more relevant than it's ever been. Statistically, it's, I think, one in 13 children. That is, two children per classroom. My daughter started kindergarten this year, and statistically, that's exactly the way it proved. There are two children in that classroom with food allergies, and we are finding that to be very consistent. And so, as a children's museum, we've recognized that as an important piece of our community in raising awareness for that, drawing attention to that, educating around that. And to do so, we've fallen in line with the National Recognition of Food Allergies and the Week, which is this week, the 14th through the 20th. And then this Friday, we are holding an event for that purpose, to educate the community with certain programming for that. So, in line with that, we come before y'all tonight just asking for a proclamation recognizing the importance of this in our community. I was joking with Susan earlier. I did this last year, and my comment was, this is the first time I'm before you, but won't be the last time. Because unfortunately, I don't think this is going away anytime soon. There's certainly major tread in terms of resolving it, but it will be here for a while. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And if I could also, I would like just to hand up for your awarement of the...
Thank you. David, Susan?
Lucy.
It's my honor, on behalf of council, for this proclamation proclaiming May 14th through 20th, 2017, Food Allergy Awareness Week in the city of Burlington. Whereas as many as 15 million Americans have food allergies, and as 6 million of our children under the age of 18. And whereas research shows that the prevalence of food allergies is increasing among children, and whereas eight foods cause the majority of all food allergy reactions in the U.S., shellfish, fish, milk, eggs, tree nuts, peanuts, soy, and wheat. And where symptoms of a food allergic reaction can be subtle or severe, and can include hives, vomiting, respiratory disease, and where as according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, food allergy results in more than 300,000 ambulatory care visits a year involving children. And whereas reactions typically occur when an individual unknowingly eats a food containing an ingredient to which they are allergic. And whereas there's no cure for food allergies, and the strict avoidance of the offending food is the only way to prevent an allergic reaction. And whereas food allergy research and education is a national nonprofit organization dedicated to ensuring the safety and inclusion of individuals with food allergies and seeking a cure. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Ian Volteus, Mayor of the city of Burlington, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim May 14th through 20th, 2017, as Food Allergy Awareness Week in the city of Burlington. I encourage residents of Burlington, North Carolina, to increase their understanding and awareness of food allergies and their effects. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
This evening, we also have a special report from the Burlington Municipal Service District. At this time, council recognizes Jessica Pacion.
My name is Jessica Pacion, and I'm the Executive Director of Burlington Downtown Corporation. And I'm delighted to be speaking with you all this evening. First, I'd like to thank city council for allowing me to review the work the BDC has done this past year, as well as thank the members of my board and our Board President, Jan Davis, who have all joined us this evening. I'm incredibly honored to represent the BDC and for the opportunity to work towards revitalizing downtown Burlington. And I'd like to say how humbled I am at the support and faith the community has shown in me so far during my short tenure. The Burlington Downtown Corporation is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) agency, and we work to bring together the resources of the city, community partners, and the downtown community to maintain, enhance, and promote downtown. Between 2009 and 2016, the BDC was led in part by the Board of Directors and former Executive Director Ann Morris. This past summer, the Board of Directors conducted a search for a Director of Communications, and luckily, in October 2016, appointed Miranda Irvin, who's in the audience as well, to the role. Miranda graciously and bravely served as the sole staffer for the BDC while the Board conducted a national search to fill the director role. In January of this year, I was appointed to serve in this capacity, and it's been quite a blast so far. So Miranda and I have the opportunity to work really closely with our 19-member Board of Directors, and recently held a retreat to identify our 2017-19 Plan of Work. The mission of our organization is always at the forefront of our mind as we have these discussions. And our mission is to create an environment for development that enhances downtown to serve as the cultural, historic, social, and economic center of the community. So to understand the MSD, I'm going to give just a little bit of background, so bear with me. The BDC was established in 1988 with the formation of the Municipal Services District, and this is when Burlington entered into the North Carolina Main Street program. Since then, commercial properties in downtown core have contributed to the MSD tax. The current tax rate is 16 cents per $100 valuation, and as you can see above, provides over half of the revenue at a valuation of $115,000 for this year. We also receive additional funding from the city for operations, and 3% of our budget is comprised of a continued annual private contribution. One of the things we do is provide business services. So these funds allow the BDC to work towards positioning downtown as the best district for retention and expansion by offering incentives and technical business services to assist Municipal Service District business owners and property owners. We strive to be the first resource that business owners turn to and are diligently working to partnership with community members so that we're able to provide businesses with educational and promotional tools. In order to tailor our services to best fit the needs of our MSD neighbors, we're consistently seeking public input. In March of this year, we launched the first phase of an ongoing effort to hear from every individual in the MSD. Since this distribution of the stakeholder survey, we received 20% response rate from our business owners, and 18% of our property owners have responded. It was quick to find three recurring themes that came to the forefront of all this feedback. First, business owners are seeking additional help from us for their marketing needs. Secondly, many of the replies identified the need to improve internet capabilities in downtown. It's become consistently apparent to them that connectivity has proven to be a factor in how well many of those businesses perform. The final theme that we saw was that our neighbors in the MSD want us to continue working to create the clean and safe downtown that they see now. The second phase of our survey will be finished by the end of July, at which time we expect to have data articulating the breadth and scope of the high-speed connectivity needs for the district. This initial feedback, however, has allowed us to address immediate needs, and as we plan for the coming months, can focus our efforts on what truly is needed for the district. One of the things we really like to do, and is really important, is to invest in downtown. It's another way that we fulfill our mission. Again, on behalf of the BDC board and staff, I'd like to thank the city for its continued support of our BDC small grants program. I'm happy to report that we've awarded over half of our grant dollars for the year. Eight different grants have been awarded to six recipients, and there are several additional grants in process for review, and we're confident that by the end of this fiscal year, all of our grant dollars will have been reinvested into the downtown. This year, we've leveraged nearly 180,000 private investment dollars through this program. As many of you know, the Small Grants Program consists of six different types of grants, each designed to target identified needs within the district. This year, we saw business and property owners seeking assistance from the Building Rehab and Modernization Grant. This is by far the most robust grant and maxes out at $25,000, but allows business and property owners to use the funds to repair building, facades, roofs, windows, electrical plumbing, and other building code issues that the property owners have encountered. Of the eight grants we awarded, in fact, six were for this purpose. The Grants Review Committee also awarded three facade grants and two business-upfit grants. The recipients of our grant dollars must provide a 50/50 match for projects, are required to complete their project within a year of the award approval, and must stay within the MSD for five years after they've received the grant. But we're also partnering with businesses to apply for grants from people with external funding sources. We're hopeful to hear about some of these applications with the next few weeks. So all of these efforts allow us to contribute to building the economic base of downtown. We're hoping for greater investment and are positioning the MSD to be an attractive and predictable location for investment. We also strive to create a vibrant and welcoming space full of activity. The BDC continues to work with the city and community groups to combine efforts in making downtown a beautiful destination. In fact, this is the fourth year that our downtown planter project is underway, and later this week, you will see volunteers out refreshing those terracotta pots. I'm also sad to report that June 30th marks the end of an era. If you all recall, 2012 was when the BDC began the downtown rebranding project. The fruits of that labor were celebrated in early 2016 during a brand launch, but also acted as the catalyst for the downtown wavefinding project. It's on target to be completed by July 1st. In fact, within the next few weeks, you'll begin to see installation of the pedestrian signs here throughout the downtown core. This project will not only enhance the appearance of downtown, it will improve the accessibility for everyone. Our work this year has also been focused on creating a healthy business environment. In February, we launched our MSD. We call it the M-Cubed, the Monthly MSD Mingle, which is held on the first Tuesday of every month and allows community members to gather for coffee for 30 minutes, to create an environment of camaraderie for everyone visiting the MSD. Attendance at these events have doubled since it began, and we're thrilled to see the community engage with one another. Businesses are also actively engaging in creating an active downtown. We've planned, or they have planned, eight independent events this year. In fact, last weekend, the Front Street Market debuted and was seen with rave reviews, and we think might become a staple event for downtown. We are incredibly grateful to our community partners. I'm going to name a few: LabCorp, the city, B-Town Events, Paramount, and the library, just a few, like I said. But they've helped to really create this active downtown. And it's paying off. So now, let's take a look at the state of the MSD properties. There are 124 properties in the district, generating a property-type mix of 96 buildings, 25 parking lots, three community or green spaces. And as you can see from the chart above, that LabCorp owns the largest percentage of MSD property, and we are very happy to call them our neighbors. Taking a closer look at the state of the district, I'm pleased to note that we have an 82% occupancy rate of the 92 buildings in the district that are currently occupied. The 17 that are vacant, only three are vacant and unavailable. Half of our vacant spaces are in development stages, and several have projects in the pipeline already. The remaining six vacant properties are move-in-ready, and those owners are actively seeking tenants. This positions the MSD nicely, because we have space to grow and expand, which provides opportunity to enhance the business mix down here. Taking a look at the business mix, you can see that it's comprised primarily of service-focused firms. Of the 97 businesses, only nine are food and dining establishments, and even fewer, 2% are residential spaces. So our recruitment efforts are primarily focused on diversifying the offerings within these two business categories. So the BDC saw some change, as well as the landscape in downtown. Nine businesses closed or moved out of the district while eight new businesses joined the district. It's not ideal to be standing here tonight showing a net loss of one business, but we're confident that by the end of the year, we'll have a net positive new business rate for the MSD. And we're lucky that we have the space for that new growth to welcome neighbors. Thank you again for your time, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions from council? I'd just like to mention, I had the opportunity to come to M-Cubed for one of the first events. I encourage, I believe the invitation's open for council members who wish to come and mingle with some of our downtown merchants, so I believe Jessica can send you more information about those monthly events.
Be happy to do that. Thank you.
Council recognizes City Clerk Renee Ward.
Council's most likely to advise you energy to avoid conflicts of which is a matter of force. At this time, I ask if you're in potential conflict, who's going to make such an appearance?
None. Before council is the agenda, do I hear a motion to adopt or deny the agenda?
No.
All those in favor of adopting the agenda, please say aye. All those opposed? Agenda has been adopted. Following items are consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the following items, please let us know. Item A, to create an Assistant Aquatics Director position, Level 22, effective upon council approval. Item B, to create a Recreation and Parks Maintenance Technician position, Level 15, effective upon council approval. Items C, D, and E have been moved to our new business tonight. Item F, Budget Amendment 2017-43 Aquatic Center, the details of which are spelled out in your agenda. And item G has also been moved to new business. Do I hear a motion regarding the consent agenda?
No.
Second. All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda, please say aye. All those opposed? Consent agenda has been approved. We have a number of items of new business. Item one, city council will consider a notice of intent to adopt a resolution to approve a 10-year May Hosiery parking agreement between the city of Burlington and... Am I saying this right? Clay Chan or Clutch?
Clacken.
Clacken. Clacken Properties LLC for 30 parking spaces and municipal lot eight, and to set a date of public hearing for June 20th, 2017. At this time, council recognizes Economic Development Director Peter Bishop.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. Good to be with you again. Just a very short review. We discussed this potential parking arrangement at the work session on May the 1st. Y'all have previously approved a rezoning for the May Hosiery property for this residential project, 70 apartments in that building. And then the local landmark was approved at the May 2nd meeting after our discussion on parking. The onsite capability of this property for parking is about 60 spaces at 70 units with some two-bedroom and additional guests. Obviously, there's a number crunch. The developer has requested a parking lease from the city, and per NC General Statute 160A-272, we are requesting this be placed on the agenda for the 16th for a public hearing, rather, for the 20th, June 20th, for a public hearing. And we're also requesting an advertisement of a notice of intent for that lease, as per statute requirements. You will notice there are some changes on the documents in front of you from the agenda. Staff and legal counsel identified a few changes that needed to be applied to a legal description and some other statutory references within those documents. That's why those changes were made. I'll certainly answer any questions about those scheduled placements. But just a reminder, we're asking council to set some dates for public hearing and to announce this notice of intent. We are not approving a lease at this time or anything else.
Any questions from council regarding this item? Do I hear a motion regarding the notice of intent?
I make motion that we approve the notice of intent and set a date of public hearing for June 20th.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Motion is passed. Thank you, Peter.
Thanks, Mayor.
Item two, city council will consider setting a date of public hearing to adopt the 2017-2018 fiscal year budget and community development budget. At this time, council recognizes City Manager Harden Watkins.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Council members, as noted, we need to set a date of public hearing to follow proper procedures to adopt our FY17-18 budget and also our community development budget. Staff is prepared to move forward with that either on June 6th or June 20th, and need some direction from council, and you can provide that for us this evening.
Third question.
...in connection with setting a date of public hearing. I think it was originally proposed for June 6th, and there was some, you know, other information. I want to look at the budget a little bit further, and I proposed moving it to June 20th, but I think June 6th would be good. And also, too, I believe Mr. Volter has some plans, and I think it's good for all of us to be here at the time the budget's adopted. So June 6th is acceptable to me, and I trust to be the rest of you. And if indeed it is, I'll make that motion, you know, for the hearing on...
Second. Any concerns with June 6th?
Just surprise. Okay.
Well, you know, one thing, well, no, two things. And number one is, it's actually three weeks before our next meeting, so I've got, you know, anything that the information I need. We certainly have time to do it. And it's not an ordinary two-week turnaround cycle, so the three weeks is sufficient. So June 6th is good for me.
I don't hear any objections.
So there's a motion and second?
Not yet.
Yeah, there is. Yeah, a second.
Is that good?
All right. Is that satisfactory for the motion? All those in favor of the motion to set the date for public hearing for June 6th, please say aye. All those opposed? Motion is passed. Item three on our agenda, city council will consider approving a contract amendment between the city of Burlington and TransDev Services, Inc., to operate a paratransit service for a period of three years with an option for two one-year periods. At this time, council recognizes City Manager Harden Watkins.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things. We can, I think there's been some interest in having some additional information on this presented. We can do a cursory level of that this evening and give a little more in-depth discussion at the June 5th work session, and then action today to follow on June 6th or June 20th. So it's council's pleasure on that. Mr. Nunn is here, and the two of us could answer some questions now, or we would be happy to have a more formal presentation at the June 5th work session.
I had originally asked, you know, that because of the cycles, you know, when we have the cycles, we have a council meeting without a work session. It doesn't allow much time, you know? We get the agenda on Thursday, and this particular item here has some history. In other words, we had some problems and some interest in providing this service. I think it'd be helpful if we were to set this on for the first meeting in June and have a brief presentation, the work session, the night before. I think it'd be helpful, you know, just to go over that, you know, in more detail, and not necessarily to take the time tonight. I don't know, it'd take a lot of time at the work session, but I think it'd allow more time for questions. And like I said, if we could get a brief presentation, I would ask that we do that.
So this is more to inform the public?
Right. Yeah. And also to, you know, put together, you know, maybe, you know, like I said, a little presentation if somebody, you know, wants to know how we got where we got. I mean, I won't get into the history, but you know, there was some interest in providing the service, and there was a lot of back and forth, and it didn't work out, but now we're winding up with TransDev, which is fine, but I'd like everybody to know how we got where we are. And I think a little information at the work session would be helpful.
Did you move to table, or you're asking to table?
Yeah, just make a motion to set it on, you know, set it on for the June 6th meeting. You know, for consideration of authorization, then just do the work session presentation on the night of 5th. That's acceptable.
Is there any adverse impact to the schedule of TransDev?
That'll work. That'll work okay.
Okay. All right.
Yeah. I'll make a motion.
A second.
All right. All those in favor of moving this item to June 6th with a presentation on June 5th, please say aye. All those opposed? Motion is passed. Item four, city council will consider adopting a resolution to approve an amendment to the Municipal Service District Services Contract for a three-year extension effective July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2021. At this time, council recognizes City Manager Harden Watkins.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. We, staff is working on adjusting some language in the amendment that's been proposed. It's not ready this evening. We weren't able to get that completed. So I would suggest we set a target date for action of either June 6th or June 20th.
Both the dates are liable without any impact on services, or... Okay. Does council have preference between June 6th or June 20th? Or do I hear a motion regarding...
Make a motion to put it on the agenda for June 6th.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor placing this item on the agenda for June 6th, please say aye. All those opposed? Motion is passed. Item five on our agenda, city council will consider approving Budget Amendment 2017-44 Police Fire and Fire Radio System Capital Needs, the details of which are spelled out in your agenda. At this time, council recognizes City Manager Harden Watkins.
I may have set the record for most items I've talked about.
We should have mixed it up. Insert Peter in between the few.
We have discussed this at a recent work session with city council, and as everyone has heard, it's a much-needed improvement for both our fire department and police department in their operations. Chief Smythe, Chief Smith, and I are all here this evening and ready to answer any questions if council has that. I think there may be some interest in having a little extra time to talk about this as well, and so I'll just open the floor to council comments or questions.
Are there any questions, comments, or concerns from council?
I'll just say, I mean, I think we all support. We've had multiple conversations about it. We understand the need, and I thank both the chiefs for their time and energy and their staff putting together a presentation for us last time. It's really a matter of semantics, but I mentioned earlier that I thought, I know there's a deadline to get a discount approved, but I would like to see the money come out of the fund balance in the next fiscal year, and that's really, really kind of immaterial. But in the effort to just sort of manage money that comes out of reserves and conversation topic, that was more important to me. So based on that, if no one else has a problem with it, I'd make a motion that we authorize the project needs to be, the funds to be committed for this project and to be expanded after July 1st of 2017.
Yeah, there's a motion.
Okay. Any questions or comments regarding that motion? All those in favor of the motion to approve this budget amendment, please say aye. All those opposed? Motion is passed. This concludes our agenda items for this evening. There are no public comments tonight. Do I hear any comments from city council?
I've got a couple. One, I would like to say congratulations to all of our city staff that received and employees that received recognition at our recent event. I was unable to attend, so I appreciate everybody being there. We had function holding in town, and we actually had Williams High School have their golf team was, came up as runner-up in the state championships that day in Pinehurst, and I was scrambling a little bit. But I really hate, Kim and I both hate we couldn't be there, but I wanted to say how much city staff means to us, and I'm glad everybody was recognized at that event, and I appreciate it. Secondly, I've got something that's bothered me a little bit, and I want to make a comment about it and then be done with it, hopefully, but... was, came up as runner-up in the state championships that day in Pinehurst, and I was scrambling a little bit, but I really hate, Kim and I both hate we couldn't be there, but I wanted to say how much city staff means to us, and I'm glad everybody was recognized at that event, and I appreciate it. Secondly, I've got something that's bothered me a little bit, and I want to make a comment about it and then be done with it, hopefully, but when we were going over our budget for 17 and 18 fiscal year, someone requested a copy of our travel logs and kind of our travel expenses, and certainly, I looked at them, and initially, I had some concerns about some of the extent of travel myself. It's been much talked about, it's been much press put forward on it. I personally was concerned about the scope and purpose of some of the events, but I really only took exception to one or two, and to me, it was not a public matter, it was something that I wanted to address personally, I wanted to address it with staff, my colleagues on council, to try to create some policies moving forward. But I will say, over the weekend, I've received more comments on this information in the news. It would, it would come a close race with HB2, maybe rezoning of University and South Church and maybe annexation. That's how many comments I've heard about it. I went to a birthday party for a friend of mine who turned 80 Saturday, and I had five or six people approach me on the subject. So, I then went and saw my mother on Mother's Day, and she provided me a copy of the Almetts News and asked me if I'd read the article, and I did not, and I read it, and she handed it to me and said, you know, you really need to read this. So, I picked it up and read it, and there was a comment in there that really concerned me, and I do want to say it publicly, because Ronnie Wall, Mayor Ronnie Wall, taught me something extremely well about city government, and it is the fact that transparency is of utmost importance, and if there are issues or there are things that can be both supportive and/or controversial, everyone needs to share a voice on that, and it needs to be transparent in and of its process. The paper states, the Almetts News stated, and I assume correctly, and Thomas is here, so, but it states that the mayor insists that the apparent lopsidedness of these outlays is merely the result of his willingness to take part in out-of-town functions, and that others have neither had the time nor the interest to attend. There was a quote that says, "It's a lot to juggle as one person," he said, "and I would love to share some of that burden with other members of the council, but at this time, they haven't wanted to do so." And I will say, Mayor, I took offense to that. Whether your comments were ill-stated or just ignorant of the fact, either of which are both unacceptable to me, and that's where I take exception to the whole situation. First, you know, we do a lot of things, this council does a lot of things, and each and every one of us have a lot of items that we participate in. We had a TAC meeting today, I know Bob Ward's on that, he was there today, I served on that board as well, I serve on the PTRC in Curnisville, both on their Board of Delegates and their Executive Board. I've worked with the league in the past, on their Legislative Action Committee for Tax and Finance, on their nominating committee, part board, we'll meet in the morning at 8:00. So, we all have commitments, and we all have things that we do, and I cherish each and every minute that everyone takes away from their family and their work and their time to do what they do, and it's real important to me that everyone get recognized for that. And I do not like the fact that there is any indication that one of us is more important than any other when it comes to the time that we commit to do so. So, I wasn't quoted in this, Thomas, you didn't interview me for this, so I couldn't get my two cents worth in print, so I thought I'd get my two cents worth in public, because I'm not afraid to say what I feel. Uniquely, $2,530.47 of this budget was spent on mayoral events, mostly through metro mayors. It may seem relevant, but I do want to remind everybody that we have a council-manager form of government, and we do not have a strong mayor form of government. Our mayor is a member of council, so I question the validity of that and whether we should be spending the money on that. And I hope that we can have a work session to create a process for identifying these. I hope that we can have a work session and determine whether or not it's even relevant for us to be a member of an organization that doesn't really promote all of us as a unit, because we are a council, we are a board. We get elected as individuals, but we must govern as a board, and I think that's extremely important. Furthermore, $1,157.64 was spent on Makers Movement trips to Washington. You know, that's something that I think is important, I think it's important to downtown. Downtown's here tonight, and that's an extremely important piece, but we've got to be careful how we pick and choose the items that we're supporting unilaterally versus those that we're supporting as a board, because I do believe this board threw a lot of weight behind the Makers Movement and how we would support them, but we did say that we wanted to be careful about investing any funds behind it, and I think that was one of the comments that Mayor Protim Fawcett had, had a concern over. And then lastly, $600 was to attend the governor's ball. I view that as truly a donation. My wife and I received the same invitation, we had fully planned on going, I'm going to support our government no matter what party he or she may be, and we were fully prepared to write a personal check for that. I do not believe that's city business, and Mayor, I want to go on record as asking you to reimburse the city for that, and then you collect your money from whomever that entity was paid. But I want to get back to what sort of aggravated me most about it, and you do share a lot of the burden with these council members. We do a lot, and we do it as a penalty of leadership, but not to be self-fulfilling, and I would challenge you to be reflective upon that in your future comments, and that's all I have to say on it.
Thank you for those comments.
Absolutely.
Other comments from counsel? I have a couple of events I'd like to mention. For those looking to explore the outdoors, Burlington Parks has this month has guided hikes on May 18th and 22nd from 6:00 p.m. until 7:30 p.m. More information's available at burlingtonnc.gov/ outdoors. Fourth Friday's kicks off, I know downtown's excited about that later this month, on May 26th. That'll be down at the Depot Space, that's always a popular event all summer long, and that continues through September, I believe. So, city offices will also be closed for Memorial Day on May 29th, and traffic schedules will be adjusted as normal, Monday and Tuesday being pushed out one day to the 30th and 31st respectively. Any other counsel questions?
I've got a comment I'd like to make as well.
Yeah.
I think the, the thing that we have to look at is, as Councilman Butler said, this is a council-manager type government that we have here, and no one is above any of the council members here. I think that keeping each other informed is one of the most important things that we can do on this council, and when we stop doing that and talking to each other, then we lose what we're elected to do, is to work as a unit, and I just feel like we've got some work to do on that. I feel like that we haven't done that in the last two years, that it worked as a total unit to let everybody know what's, what we're doing. I think we need a little bit more feedback from, from you, Mayor, and we need, probably need to give you a little feedback from us, so it's just a 50/50 split we've got here, that we need each other to make this council work like it should, and I just feel like that we have some issues that we need to sell, and I'm sure that we can sell that among ourselves from time to time when these things pop up. But again, this is a strong council we have here, strong council, council-manager type form of government, and that's what I'm asking that we stick to, is a council-manager type government.
Yeah. Thank you for those comments. Any other comments from counsel?
Yeah, let me, let me just follow up with a remark, and I think this arises out of the issue of the travel. I think, you know, it would be good to look at some, you know, some policy, I think you would add, you know, for some, to look at a policy, maybe we could ask our manager to put something together for us to consider, because, you know, at the end of the day, you know, when we do this and we spend taxpayer money, I, I really, I mean, of course, I'm saying stuff, it's a lot like preaching to the choir, you know, we've got the issue of accountability, and we need to demonstrate that, and if we have some process, approval process, you know, we're all in it together, and I think Councilman Butler, Telo Fawcett, we're all in this thing together, and if we all sort of join in and we agree on a policy and we agree that that's appropriate, we, you know, I, I think, I think whoever goes and does, and represents the city, I'd certainly encourage it, but I think we really need to look at a policy, and if you would concur, I would ask the manager maybe to put something together to consider. I mean, unless there's no objection, could we ask him to do that?
Any objections from counsel? I know that's kind of a continuation of our work session conversation regarding setting out some policy, and as I mentioned then, as I'll continue to mention tonight, I'm fully supportive of exploring that road ahead, so. Any council member hikes, or Fawcett?
Good one.
Okay. Some management. Is there a date that you'd like to see that come back before council had a work session? Or would August?
Does anybody have any particular, you know, thinking there may be travel in the meantime, maybe August is putting it too far out?
Yeah, sooner rather than later for something that's...
I already told you about my infrastructure conference that's coming out this week.
Yeah, and, and I, I enjoy that, I think that's a real good idea, and I'm happy you're going.
There's just one thing I want to say about this, and I think that it's important that the people of Burlington understand. I think it's, it's dependent on us to continue to learn how to do this job and to find out what is going on in, in the community that's talking about this sort of thing. So, I don't want to make this a punitive thing, I think it's important for us to say that maybe we need to share the information, but it's certainly important for us, I think, to participate and to sharpen our saw, so to speak, so that we can do as, as good a job as we can. Just need to make that comment, because that's kind of being left out a little bit of it.
No, I agree with that whole part and could not agree more. I've been to the League of Municipalities events and the National League Cities Meeting in the past to learn things, but typically, we go with an agenda that we've talked about some things at a work session, we're trying to seek other information, and a lot of times we've gone on behalf of city staff to try to gather some knowledge on things, and I think that's extremely important that we continue to do that, but, you know, I think it's a fine line between trying to perpetuate what we're willing to do as a council and come across as being self-fulfilling in one way or another, and I think that all councils should be involved in it, we should select and shoulder our fair share of the burden, and we should, we should go and participate in the things as we're assigned to do as our committee appointments. I agree.
I'd like to echo those statements, that those trips have been wonderfully beneficial. Cities live in an incredibly competitive ecosystem. When folks choose where they live, they have a lot of choices. They have over 500 cities that they could choose from in North Carolina alone, and so it's important for our community to thrive, to constantly be abreast of the ecosystem out there. One of the things I've learned is that cities of all different sizes face very similar challenges. There's a lot that we can learn from cities of all sizes out there. Chicago can teach us things, but so can Green Level, and it's important that we reach out beyond our borders and learn and help innovate. So, I appreciate that council's willing to explore this, this travel policy discussion further, and to explore what the definition of shoulder our fair burdens means for council members across the board, so. Any other comments on that? All right. Do I hear any further motions?
I need to make a motion to go into closed session, Mayor, as a personnel matter, GS 31811A6, 14318.11A6, it's personnel matter.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor of closed session, please say aye. All those opposed, counsel will return following this closed session. All those opposed, council will return following this closed session. session. Need a motion to resume an open session? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
No.
Do we go back?
Yeah.
Do we not?
No. We adjourned our closed session, but we need a motion to open.
So who?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed. Don't hear a motion to adjourn, please adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, city council is adjourned. Thank you all for coming this evening.